Good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of February 10th, 2022. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a matter of order, we're happy to have members tonight of the Warrant and Finance Committee here with us. And when we finish our school business, we'll be going into a budget process, beginning the budget process. And at that time, we're going to do introductions of everybody, so everybody will know everybody. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments to the agenda, and we will be going into executive session after the budget piece.
Must be a funny gift, Jerry.
Well, celebration, oh, you've got comments of the public yet, Mike, don't put that up yet.
Yeah, okay, comments from the public.
So I came here today to see if we could have something put on the agenda for the next meeting, to see if we can look into changing the proficiency-based grading for the junior high to get them more prepared for high school. You know, right now, they're doing a proficiency-based grading system, and that's not what Sanford does. So I feel we're preparing the kids really well in every aspect we can, but I feel in that aspect, we're not really preparing them for. In my eyes, I looked at it, there was a couple of different ways, obviously. You know, you have them, you can't prepare them for the social aspect. They went from a small school to one of the largest in the state. But everything else we cover on, you know, we teach them really well. They're smart kids, they're all coming out doing really good. But we're not teaching their percentages. You know, they're not failing, they're not getting to 69, they're not getting 81. They're looking at a two and saying, I don't know, what the heck's a two? Teaching basketball, small example, about teaching basketball. I'm telling kids, they're giving me 50%, they're in fifth grade, they're looking like, what the heck's 50%? I knew 50% all the way up through. You know, you're P B football, you're asked to give it 110%. Ask the sixth grader, give 110%, see what the answer is. He doesn't know, 50%, what am I doing? I feel like I'm doing what everybody else is doing. I'm not doing half of what everybody else is doing, right?
Well, this is something that has bothered me because over the last two years, we really haven't gotten together, been able to grade normally, I would say, because that one time, actually, they were remote learning altogether, and then, you know, mishmash then, and then now we're back at school. And I really wanted to have like a workshop in order to study, is this working? Because I, you know, this goes back since John started.
Sure.
And I didn't know if, I thought it might work really well, the whole concept when we first brought it up. Because everyone has to remember, this was brought up because it was a state mandate. It was going to be mandated by the state, every school do it. I think mostly the high schools said, this is not going to work at the high school level. I don't think many high schools got involved and did it or even started it. But we had started it early, and we thought, well, it's going to become law, let's do it. And I thought maybe K or definitely first grade through fifth, it seemed like a plausible way to have their report cards and... I don't know, I, you know, I'm old fashioned and I liked the way I was brought up, and I liked having my 99s and sometimes 100. And, but that drove me, the numbers drove me. And I think if you have this child, I haven't even seen a report card, I've seen them, but not up close. But it's very wordy, I mean, it, you know, yes, my child, your child is trying to do their best or whatever the comments are, I don't even know. But I haven't been able to look at it, study it, and get involved in it. And I think, you know, in a workshop, if we had held a workshop, I would have said, this is one of the things we need to look at, is this working? Is it working for Acton? It's not state law? We're going over to Sanford, is it melding? Like, I never even heard from the teachers if it's working. So I was hoping we could get something.
You know, I think proficiency-based learning is working very well in the school all the way up through. Maybe we do need to look at the reporting, not part of it, for the upper grades. I think proficiency-based learning is a great concept in a lot of schools. And I think Sanford was considering it at the time, but I think with their new big building, with all the changes that were taking place, they put their emphasis on other things. But it's certainly something we could look at and talk about next month to see if, even though the learning process will remain the same, because they're doing well with that, see if we can get a better, get a better grading system set up that can reflect what the proficiency-based learning is doing in a more conventional way.
So we do also, like, we've had a lot of babysitters come up through for watching our kids go from Acton. All of them, I think, were from Acton. And I have asked them, they're even in college now, and it was right in the beginning. That was a big change for them, speaking for them, asking them directly, so.
So we can put it on next month as an update of kind of where it came from, what we have and where we're, and where we're heading, could be up for grabs, so to speak. Just to kind of fill you in on the brief history. The high schools were pushed for proficiency-based diplomas for the year 2019 and 2015. Then that got moved to 2020, then that got completely disbanded. So every high school in the state was trying to figure out how they're going to graduate kids on a zero to four versus on a zero to 100. And then it didn't become a graduation requirement anymore.
So our schools obviously just didn't have that.
At the high school level, I would be surprised if there's any, that that really stuck with.
Yeah.
They might be dual systems at best, or back to the percentage. There are many elementary schools that do have a zero through four, zero through five. There'll be very few high schools today you'll find that have something like that.
Right, what I'd like to see, though, is like what they, you know, elementary schools, great.
I heard you said, you said middle school, yeah, yeah, no, I heard you, I heard, yeah, yeah.
So like, you know, if you go to all these, like, I went to Massa V C, and they all come together in junior high. You know, I bet there's a separation there, they might do it in junior high, but I bet you'll see, I'm not, I have no evidence, no data.
Right.
But I bet if they're leading up to high school, because now they're all getting together, I bet they're going back to percentages.
My guess would be middle schools are probably 50/50. I'd perhaps find a high school doing a report out on a zero through four versus a zero through, you're right, you're right.
Sanford does do a zero through four for their elementary grades, I do know that.
So they probably change for junior high then.
We can look into it, I don't know, give me a chance to actually dig into some, but we'll take it.
Absolutely, just turn around. My kids are coming up through and, you know, I just see it, like, my world is numbers, you know? A plumber, my world's numbers, everywhere you go, you go to the stores, 20%, oh, you're, everything's numbers. And then these kids are looking at one through four, it's kind of, it's discouraging outside of school to see, you know, how they're not carrying percentages. And I know they learn percentages in math, but then they won't move on to the next thing, which could be whatever the next thing is, hopefully they picked up some of it. But percentages are life, you know, you carry that forever.
I think, you know, like I said, the zero through, or I should say like 65 to 100 is a motivating force.
No, it's zero through 100, you've got to calculate, how many questions can you get wrong? That's how you learn your percentages.
I never did that, never did.
Thank you.
Great, we'll put it on the agenda, it's bigger than a breadbox, so it'll probably, the conversation will start next month, but this is a pretty big piece that we may end up carrying through the next couple of school committee meetings. We'll see where it takes us.
Well, we may need a committee.
We may need a workshop in between.
We probably will.
Okay, I do have a quick question, what? On the next meeting, is this something that like other parents should come to that are kind of like sporting it kind of? Or is this something that just leave alone and let it kind of?
I don't know exactly what the next meeting will have, other than in my head, just listening to you, I'm thinking a presentation of the differences, maybe the why and what we have in place. And then if there's conversations about change, then absolutely that. You know what I mean? Because I hear your case for the middle school needs to be a transition to high school. I think that's kind of the focus of what this needs to look like. But I'd like to know also, what are the other York County schools doing with the middle schools? I really don't know.
We need to investigate, we need data.
I'd like to know, I know high schools, right?
How many middle schools are part of the elementary school, like connected by G U Y?
In York County, if it's in the building, oh, Saco, no, I think it is just us, I was going to say maybe Saco, because they own that high school.
So I know what I'm like, you know, Mass V C. But we were more like, you know, we were definitely connected with the high school, we were doing, you know, because that's it, you know? So I feel like it would be.
Good.
Great, awesome, thanks for that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, and we'll definitely take it under advisement and see what we can do. Any other public comments? Okay, then, we'll move on then to number three, which is celebrating of learning.
This is, this subject's close to Mr. Corey's heart, and I do mean that. The celebration of learning, we have to expand our celebration when it opens. We need to make it a little bigger, yeah. There they are, we're going to be, there they are. A celebration of learning is a celebration of twins. Mr. Corey has had twins since the last time we saw him. There they are. They gave me the names, but I'm not sure they're lined up under the right kiss.
I'm not sure if I put them in the right place, give me a second.
Are they identical?
They're supposed to be.
Raquel can tell them apart, but I can't.
You're going to have to paint a toenail or something.
We have little iniquities on them, but I can only tell when I'm changing diapers which ones were.
Yeah, just a public recognition to Mike and Raquel, everybody's home and safe and happy, and they're doing well. Yeah, so there you go, Mike.
Thanks.
Hope you get some sleep.
Two hours here and two hours there.
The fourth, I thought this was a, the fourth thought this was a pretty special event, too, for one of our administrative team members. So we decided we'd just like to do a little something to help out just a little bit with double trouble, I call it.
Ooh, everything.
So we can just line up here, my friends. You meet all of us, and take one and run with it. So we know that one of the biggest things is, you know, like you said, changing, lots of changes, lots of changes.
This morning was a mess.
So we wanted to make sure that. This is like 160 more changes for you.
Which should last you a couple of weeks.
Thanks, guys.
I'm glad I don't have to change diapers anymore.
There's a different colored little pet band, so you can put me out, if you want to know which is which, you can put one on and go with all of them, right? And some hooks, because you can never have too many of those.
I kept going to the store and I'm like, hey, they got two of them, you know, two of the same outfits. That was a bad idea.
Well, congratulations from the board.
Thanks, guys.
We're happy for you.
We need these. We're all willing to babysit after their body trade, Mike.
We don't want this going.
Okay, excellent. Let's move on then to number four, which is COVID update. And you all have your package, little packet that I sent around that we get from FEMA every week. We get two or three of these a week, actually, and John got some back, got them as care aboard. And they basically tell us that York County is still in a high transmission area. It tells us how many people in Acton have had COVID up to this date, although we know that all the COVID cases do not get reported. So this would be probably a lot lower number than what's really happening because they've kind of stopped doing all the counting, they're telling people they're doing self tests, don't log it to report it, because it's... But it confirms the fact that along with our state guidelines, that we still need to continue to wear masks when children are in the building. They have to wear them on the buses, and they have to wear them. Staff has to wear them now, staff was wearing them all the time. And just recently, John felt it was okay to lift the mask part of it for the staff when the kids weren't in the building. So unless they wanted to, they can still wear them if they want to. But it's a pretty detailed report. We get, like I said, we get two or three of these a week. And so we just have, we just have it on our agenda each month that we're going to update, pass out the updated information. So that's the updated information as of Tuesday, of course. Any questions on that for anybody? All right, then, let's go on to number five, which is the consent agenda. And I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda. So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary, seconded by CJ. Any discussion? All in favor? So. So now we'll look at some, we don't have it on here, but we usually at this point have some. Yeah, if anybody has any questions on any of the reports, any of the administrative reports that are in the packet.
The line item is missing.
Yeah.
So the new furnace has all been installed, all the apparatus you need?
Yeah, I think we're going to get into that in a few minutes, yeah.
Oh, I thought that was part also.
Yep, it is, sort of keep part of this. So we'll look for the superintendent report.
Right, just have two quick ones. Andy and his crew has done a great job keeping up with the snow. And it's been on the weekends, it's been at odd times, it's been wet, heavy stuff. So kudos to Andy and his crew for getting the job done. This place is always safe for everybody to come in when the door opens, and we really appreciate that. Our N W E A winter assessments are complete for the students. As I mentioned before, well, Judy mentioned, our COVID issues with staff and students still are pretty, pretty good. We, looking at other districts, Acton's done quite well over the last couple of years and continues to not have to shut down. It's been one day, and it was a year ago, one day that we had to shut down because we didn't have enough staff. Other than that, it hasn't been a huge impact on us. And I just want to remind the committee and the audience that univocal masking is still in place for kids and staff when kids are in the building or in the presence of children. For example, if student council was here presenting tonight, we would wear our masks until the kids left, and then we could choose to take them off or not. So when the doors are open and the kids are here, that's how we do it. And the number one reason other than just practical safety for the kids is, if we do that, they're not considered close contacts under the state guidelines. That's one of the main reasons why we've had kids in school. This committee voted to do universal masking with students, and it's kept them in school. When that time comes to undo that policy, that's up to you, and that's why we do this every month, is to take a look at the numbers. So things have gone really well in the last couple of weeks for us. We came out of that winter break, it was a little more, but we're doing fine. Second to last thing is Sharon Prey has a new grandbaby, Henry.
Awesome.
Showed up the last 24 hours, maybe the last eight and a half, and she flew home, and she is probably with him right now. That's, we don't have her on Zoom tonight, congratulations to Sharon.
I heard you said she showed up.
Showed up, she showed up. All right, as Mike knows, they come when they want to come, they don't follow the schedule. And lastly, you asked about the furnace and the repair, we're finally at mission complete. So I thought I'd turn it over to Andy. Last month, we were really close to it, and this is our month to kind of give you an update on getting the second boiler in and how's it going. So I'll turn it over to him, and then I'm all done with my superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I took some photos throughout the project, and I just wanted to share them with you to give you a better idea of what it entailed. This first picture, Mike was kind enough to help me with putting the pictures together so that I could share them with you. This first picture shows the section in the old boiler that was damaged. You'll get a better idea of what the sections look like as we go through the pictures. But this was the end section, and as you can see on the backside, this is a huge crack that went across the complete chamber. It was like almost a half inch wide at one point. So this is the old boiler, the tech was taking it out. You can see all these different sections, how they're stacked together. The damaged section is all the way on the rear. When we took the boiler apart, the guys had quite a system set up because these sections are really heavy. They're like between probably 800 to 1,000 pounds each. The entire boiler, when we were done, they actually weighed it. When they, when it went through the recycling process, it was just over 8,000 pounds. But this was the old section, this is the old boiler with the jacket taken off it, and they took each section one by one and stripped it and took it out.
And how old was that?
1990-ish. So that's the boiler about halfway through disassembly. You can see they use chain falls and they had quite a setup to lift the sections off. And this big manifold on the top was cut off in sections, and there were also two manifolds on each side on the bottom that were cut up in sections as well. And that's the last section coming out. That's Charlie, who works with Johnson and Jordan, super nice guy, very knowledgeable. Just him and the other guy, named John, John was in charge of a lot of the fabrication. Both really top-notch guys, they did an awesome job. And as you can see, I mean, the disassembly and the removal of the old boiler was a really dirty job.
It took about how long total to take it all out?
It took about, it took like four, about four and a half days to remove the old one. So this is the end section that you can see that was damaged. It damaged, it occurred over time, obviously. This one chamber, we actually had deleted it from the boiler itself because we had a problem with it, and it leaked internally. So we deleted it from the system. And once that chamber is, doesn't have water in it, it doesn't cool as well. So once the damage started, it spread rather quickly, and that's why it was picked up on the inspection report. But as you can see, I mean, this is, this section is huge, it's about as tall as I am. The hole in it was just, it was massive. So this is some of the fabrication that took place on the installation of the new boiler. A lot of this piping is between four and six inches in diameter. It all had to be fabricated into the big flanges and the shut-off valves. That was all done on site. And this is the new boiler that's going, that was, as it was being assembled. The old one sat about two feet up off the ground. This one actually sits right on the pad, on the bottom. And as you can see, it's kind of the same thing, but obviously, technology has progressed a lot in the course of 20 to 25 years. These sections go in kind of in a similar fashion, but they're much more efficient the way that the water flows through them. And they have thermal rods that go in between each section. It's a, it was quite a process watching it go together. And this is the new boiler, about, I would say probably about 90% complete on the install. As you can see, all the sections are in place, everything's tied together, and they're starting to put the jacket on it. And the burner will go on this end right here. And that is our new H B Smith 28 series high-efficiency boiler. And as you can see, too, all of the exhaust and ductwork had to be fabricated and tied in. It's got a lot of, it's got some really decent features on it that the old one didn't. You can look into the combustion chamber from several different angles. The burner itself is super quiet. It's another angle of it. All of the pipes and stuff have been insulated.
Do you know what the warranty is on the block on that?
I don't, but it's all, it's all contained in the information that they included with the contract. So this week, on Monday, I'll be meeting with the state. I've worked with the state and kept an open line of communication with them throughout the whole process. They'll be coming down. I've already got all the paperwork submitted for the registration and all of that, but they still leave the notes brand new, they come in and inspect it to get a certificate to operate it.
So is it running yet, or does it not run until they come and look at it?
No, they've given us the okay to run it. The technician actually spent a great deal of time, once it was up and running, just monitoring it and dialing everything in.
So we have two boilers right now?
We do, we do.
And so they're both working, yes?
They're both working.
Okay.
The old one, which was the twin to the one that we removed, we actually had to take some pilots off of that old one. We saved, I saved whatever I could that we could use on the old boiler in the meantime. So we have an extra burner, and we have some extra pilots that were good, that I didn't want to toss until the other ones replaced.
What's the year of manufacture?
Excuse me?
The year of manufacture for the new burner. What year was it made?
2021.
And the old one, that's still there?
1990 vintage, roughly.
Okay.
Yep. And H B Smith is a company that's been around for a long time.
Nice work.
But they did, they did a great job.
That one that Andy had been welded before, many years ago. It already had a break in it and was welded many years ago.
Right.
And so that obviously takes some life out of it, too.
Right.
I mean, those things are 32, 33, 34 years old.
And now they're not, they're not allowing any welding repairs either.
Right.
So, and that one section, even if we had wanted to replace just that one section, it's no longer available. And even if it was, the price of replacing that, it just, you know, the only way I try to compare it or try to explain it to people would be like putting a new engine in a car that's got 300,000 miles on it.
The Smith is the same one that was in there, really?
Yes, yeah. Different burner, but same boiler.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good comment. I mean, if you put that boiler in perspective, how much fuel does one do that in the last 32, 33 years?
A lot.
At 10,000 gallons a year, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Say, not above the water that goes through it.
And what was, what was neat to see, too, because I talked to the technicians about, you know, our plan of installing the other one within the next year. I asked them, I said, if this was your own home, and you had the scenario to deal with, what would you do? Would you run the other boiler until it catastrophically failed? Or would you replace it, would you go after it proactively and replace it knowing what you know? And those big round tubes on the top, on the top and on the sides of the other one, they're about that big around. And when they took them apart, you can see the water flow through that over time actually has eroded it from the inside out. So you have thick and thin spots, and there's no way of seeing it from the outside. So when something like that breaks.
And I think that's why I invite you, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Which is very gross.
Yeah.
You don't put any treatment in the water?
No, no, no. No, we looked at that at one time, and they tested the water and for the, for the cost of it, it just didn't put, didn't make sense to do it.
They told me the same thing many years ago.
So, yeah, that's it. I'm pleased, I'm pleased that it's installed, and I'm pleased with the job that they did.
But you think about that boiler, it's burned probably 300,000 gallons of fuel oil.
Thirty years, yeah, thirty years, 10,000.
I mean, that's amazing.
When do you guys plan on putting the other one in?
Hopefully, if the budget goes forward, in the next year.
All depends on what they want.
Costs just continue to go up, too, that's the other thing.
Right, right.
You wait two years, and it's going to be five grand more or something, and you get the same cost.
Right, and I mean, our school has been very fortunate with some of the COVID relief money that, you know, we've updated the controls throughout the building. We've got all new unit ventilators for the classrooms that will be going in within the next year. And, you know, a lot of that funding, it would have eventually caught us, you know, with our capital improvement plan.
What was the price on this?
Jeanette's got the bills.
Yeah, it was around $65,000.
Yeah, $65,000.
So, that's for, you know, the whole.
She has a sign check radio now.
No, I don't think it's bad.
$64,000.
I mean, you're doing this all the time. $130,000 for two new functioning boilers. Thumbs up. Especially with some of the weather we've had lately, oh my goodness.
Going to be interested to see, too, the efficiency of the new boiler compared to the old one.
Well, and, but for buying these things, you know, the inflation rate came out today at 7.5%. So you wait two years, three years, until you have a catastrophic. You're going to be looking at, you know, $80,000, $90,000.
No, I'm very, very pleased with the final product.
Remember that when you come in front of the capital improvement committee. Well, thank you for, thanks for taking us through the process because we've kind of walked through what it did. because we've kind of walked through it at different stages, looking at it and voting on it, and all the different things that we've had to do.
Yeah, and it is.
It's nice to see how the transformation has taken place in the, I like the visual.
It's hard to envision it. And, you know, John, John has been out there throughout the whole process from start to finish. But it is, it's hard to, even if you see it and see it all unfold, it's hard to explain. But the pictures, the damp, the damaged chamber was what I wanted to show you the most, because that's what really got us started on the road to replacement, so.
Now, this, the water storage tank, that's something coming up. The water storage tank, you gave us here the information.
That was from quite a while ago, that's already been done.
Installed 10 years ago. We hope that you could commit regular maintenance.
We did that, we did the pumps.
Yes.
Just to show now.
Yeah.
What folder are you in now? All kinds of paper. Here we go. Nine, two, 21.
Yeah. That's our water storage tank in the basement.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation. You said you don't have anything else on your report?
No, Andy concluded it.
Okay, nobody has any, any questions for any of the other administrators? Okay, let's move on to number six, which is committee reports. And we'll start with the policy committee. And it looks like on our policy committee report here, we have reviews. Are these all reviews? These are all reviews. 612, school committee policy process. 613, B G R, policy adoption process. B I A, new committee member orientation. B I C, committee member freedom of access law training. And B I C E, certification of completion of freedom of access training. And these have all just been updated. These are all being presented for tonight to accept as updates, right?
Right, but there were changes. There were principal changes with the word principal.
Okay.
Superintendent principal.
Yeah, so we, that's kind of what we've been doing the last couple of months is, you know, adding superintendent slash principal. The biggest edit to one of them is on B I A. When we realized that the Freedom of Information Act stuff that we have to go through doesn't actually go to Amanda, it goes to Jennifer at town hall. So instead of the superintendent's office, it goes to the town administrator's office. That's pretty much the biggest edit we made.
It's the new committee member orientation, and the committee member freedom of access training with B I C, and it also goes to.
Yeah, that, too. It was on two, two of them.
Those are the two.
I don't know if all of us, I know I reviewed that this year.
I did.
Took the time, signing up to Jennifer, so.
So now it's in the policy that goes to Jennifer.
All right, good. Any questions or comments on any of the policies? If not, I will look for a motion to update the policies that I just read to you as updates as of, as of today.
I move that we accept policies B G, B G R, B I A, B I C, and B I C E as amended.